As the Mayor Pro Tem of the Town of Clayton, I'll call this regular meeting of the Clayton Town Council to order and ask that you all rise as we pledge allegiance to our flag and remain standing for our prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight, for giving us another day and allowing this group of people to gather. We ask that you please extend your healing and comforting arms around all those who are suffering and sick in this world tonight and heal like only you're able to do. We ask that you guide our minds and our ability as we make decisions for the Town of Clayton tonight. For us in your name, we pray, amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
We're just asking that items 6E and 6F be reversed, that we will hear item 6F, which is the annexation portion, prior to the rezoning for the Johnston Prep Charter High School.
So noted.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda.
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll go to item 5A, which is Presentation of the Big Read Proclamation. We're going to present this to Joy Garretson, our library director, and the members of our Friends of the Library and the Library Advisory Board. And we'll hear from Joy first, and then we'll do the proclamation.
Thank you. Hello, council members and manager and staff and everybody here. We really wanted to compete with the police, so I brought out everybody from the Big Read. We have a number of people here that you'll be able to present this to tonight. Not only do we have members of our library board, we have a chair and a member here. We also have a couple of members of our Friends boards, and then we have several of our partner organizations that have come tonight to support us. And I wanted to call them out before you read the proclamation, just so that you'll be aware, because we have so many great people helping us tonight. We have Cindy Brookshire from the Johnston County Writers Group. She's got an amazing set of four writers' workshops that she's put together that go along with The House on Mango Street. We have Angela West, who's the librarian at Riverwood Elementary School. She's going to be reading this. She started with her fifth graders this week. She's working with some other, with another book with the third graders. We're so excited to have her and several other teachers from actually all of our Clayton Elementary Schools. Clayton, Wes Clayton, Cooper, Powhatan, and Riverwood Elementary School are doing the Big Read with us, and we are thrilled about that. We have got Jeannie George from the Clayton Visual Arts Group. She's doing some art workshops with us. We have Andrea Archer, who I think is somewhere, maybe in the hallway, who's partnering with us from the farmer's market. We have, hang on, I have to turn around. Who am I missing? I don't think I'm missing anybody, but we have a number of other people who are going to be helping us. Elizabeth McCullough from Racial Equality Coalition might be coming in at some point, so we're just really excited that y'all are doing this proclamation for us, and we are so excited about this grant.
Thank you, Joy. I think it's wonderful that you've involved the community and all of our community partners and especially our school system. I think there are a lot more opportunities out there for us to integrate and collaborate with our school system, and this is a great way to do that. Thank you. I will read the proclamation, then I'll come down and present it, and we'll do a photograph with the group at that time. Whereas reading for enjoyment and enlightenment can enrich the lives of individuals, and whereas reading is a cornerstone of education for people of all ages, and whereas democracy needs an informed citizenry and reading is critical to this purpose, and whereas a community-wide reading event can encourage the love of reading and growth of understanding, and whereas the Big Read is a series of free outreach events designed to promote literacy, reading, and open dialogue within our community, the 2021 series will focus on author Sandra Sisneros' novel, The House on Mango Street. And whereas the Hockit Ellington Memorial Library is one of 61 organizations nationwide to receive a grant as part of the Big Read project by the National Endowment for the Arts, the Hockit Ellington Memorial Library, along with its community partners, will host various Big Read events throughout the year, including book discussions, guest speakers, theater workshops, and performances, art classes, and an art exhibition. And whereas such a reading program can bring people of diverse backgrounds and viewpoints together through the shared experience of reading, discussing, and exploring the same book. Now therefore, I, Jody McLeod, Mayor of the Town of Clayton, on behalf of all its citizens, do hereby proclaim September 21st, I'm sorry, September 2021 through May 2022 to be the Big Read Community Reading Program for the Town of Clayton, and urge all citizens to become involved by reading The House on Mango Street and by participating in various community activities related to the reading program. Duly adopted this 7th day of September 2021 while in regular session, and it is signed by our mayor, Jody McLeod, and myself.
I didn't mention Rick Heilmann from Country Superstars 102.02. Oh, and there's Elizabeth. So will we get everybody to come up and we'll have a photo?
Yes.
If you are with me, come on up. Yes, please come on in. They just read it, so we're going to do the photo really quickly, and I'll hold this.
See everyone. Okay. Just a little bit right there, perfect. All right, that's everybody. Okay, one, two, three. All right, thank you. we'll ask Cynthia Lescott and Barbara Kirby to come to the front and give you an opportunity to speak, and then we'll read the proclamation.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Smith-Bryan Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution, as a region, I would like to thank you and the council members in the Town of Clayton for this proclamation, this very important historic event that is about to take place next week, the commemoration of our Constitution and Constitutional Week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll read the proclamation, and would you like to speak, ma'am?
Just real quick, I would also, as the chairperson for Constitution Week, I'd like to invite anyone here that would like to come next Friday afternoon at 3:45 PM. We're going to do Bells Across America on the Johnston County Courthouse.
Thank you so much. I'd ask that our clerk could add that to our calendar so we can have a reminder. Thank you. Okay, proclamation, 2021 Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 gathered guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Whereas, remind our citizens of the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Now therefore, I, Jody McLeod, Mayor, on behalf of the Town of Clayton Town Council, proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week. Duly adopted this 7th day of September 2021 while in regular session. We have our presenters, Joe Pitt, Fleet Services Superintendent, Matt Lorien, Parks and Recreation Superintendent, Greg Tark, Police Chief, Rich Cola, Interim Town Manager, and Lee Barbie, Fire Chief and Interim Deputy Town Manager, or whoever their designation is. Feel free to come up. We can begin with Fleet Services.
I'm here tonight to introduce to you Hunter Johnson. He's my newest fleet mechanic. He's a great fit to the team. He's hit the ground running since he's got here, and he hasn't stopped. Hunter graduated from Wake Tech in 2018 with Associate's Degree in Business Management. He was previously employed for two years by the City of Dunn as their main fleet mechanic, and it took some prying to get him over here, but we got a good guy to put this behind. Second words.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to work for the Town of Clayton. I look forward to many years of service.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Next up, Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, administration, and guests. I'm Scott Barnard, subbing in for Matt Lorien, because Matt's subbing in for somebody else back at the recreation center, so it just rolled downhill, so here I am. But it is my pleasure to introduce you to two of our new staff. I will start on the end with Kelly Young. Kelly actually joined our staff as a part-timer back in September of 19, and then I think everybody remembers things kind of went a little sideways for the world, and an opportunity was created when Lauren promoted, and we'll get to that in just a second, and Kelly applied and killed it. She was by far the best applicant. She has years of experience in the field of education, and actually began her career as a teacher at Clayton High School, which is where she's also graduated from, so she is hometown. So it's with great pleasure for me to introduce you to Kelly Young, our department's Admin Support Specialist. If you want to say anything, you're welcome to it.
I just want to thank the Town Council for this opportunity to be introduced to you formally, and looking forward to serving the community in which I grew up. Lifelong resident, love it. Town of Clayton's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
All right, and then our second staffer for me to introduce you to today is actually a joint staffer between, between Joy and myself, just in case. But Lauren, Lauren has been with our department also since September of this, in this case of 17. She came on as our Admin Support Specialist when we stole her from NC State, which also grad of NC State. That's all we hire at this point in time. Winners, winners.
I agree.
There's a Clemson joke in there somewhere. I'll leave that one live. It's my last day, apparently. All right, but so Lauren came on board as our Admin Support Specialist, and then an opportunity was created when a staffer went out on leave, and she served as an interim, in an interim role over special events and marketing for our department. And then when that position came open, again, you know, it was an easy selection for Lauren to be promoted within and to serve in the role as our manager of special events and marketing. Marketing, she also assists Joy and her staff with, but if it looks good and it trends, it's Lauren to Lauren's credit, as well as everything from flyers to our individual events. So we've got some really neat things coming down the pipeline, some events we're putting twists on, some interesting twists on some old things. And I'll step aside and let Joy talk about what she does for the library.
Yeah, she just says what she's working on for Scott, but with a library twist. So she's helping us with our social media, she does all kinds of ads for us. She's going to be a big help with us for the Big Read. She helped us get our summer reading stuff out, which is a huge help, because otherwise I'm trying to shove it in in between other things that I'm working on or my other staff is working on, and we just really appreciate having her. She's able to push out events that we are doing, as well as taking, like if we have something where we have photos, she gets those out quickly in a really great timely way, and we just love having her around. All right, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I've definitely enjoyed the past four years that I've worked for the town, and I'm looking forward to the future here, hoping that things change in the world so that we can get some events going, but I am looking forward to it, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have our Police Chief Greg Tark. Not sure if we're holding district quarter, we're doing some recognitions here.
Oh, I'm wiping.
Lot of staff.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Madam Clerk, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager. I'm here tonight to introduce some new employees that we just recently hired. As you well know, you all afforded me with four new positions in this year's budget, and unfortunately, I've had four hired two different times. One of them resigned this morning citing that police work was not for him, but I have managed to get three, and two of them here tonight, one of them cannot be here, so I'll just recognize the ones that are here. Vernon Hansi Jr. comes to us from the Johnston County Sheriff's Department with a couple years of experience.
I'd like to, Tark said, my name is Vernon Hansi, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and work with the Town of Clayton, and I really appreciate your time.
Welcome aboard.
Patrick Cracito is not here tonight. He comes to us from Chapel Hill Police Department with a couple years of experience. And our newest hire is Jeffrey Demarest, who comes to us from the Wilson Police Department.
Jeffrey. Just wanted to say thank you to the council, and I look forward to serving your residents and yourselves. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Just briefly, as you well know, it takes a couple months to hire a police officer from the time we do interviews and go through the process of a background investigation, the psychological, the medical exams, the firearms. So this is a process that we have going all the time. We have a continuous posting on the town's website, so we're getting applicants constantly, and we are going through them as we get them and interview them as we go, so we can stay ahead of the curve a little bit. So thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, next up, we'll go to Deputy Manager, or our Manager.
I'm going to ask Kenya Wallace to step up. You all have been receiving updates regarding our Human Resources Director position over the last several months as we've been recruiting. We had a really good applicant pool, 64 applicants applied, and at the end of the day, Kenya Wallace, who stands before you, rose to the top. Kenya comes to us with 16 years' experience, most recently from the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission. She did her undergrad at UNCW with communications. She's done some additional graduate studies in HR, as well as has her certifications as well. She lives here locally with her two daughters, and we are very excited for her to get started and become part of the team. So with that.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here, and I just want to say it's an honor to be a part of the team. There's so much growth going on in Clayton, and I'm glad to be a part of that growth, and everyone has been so welcoming to me, so just thank you again.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Welcome aboard.
Good evening. Lee Barbie, Fire Chief, Interim Deputy Manager. For the last 10 or 12 weeks, I've been waiting for this day where we could introduce a planning director. I'd help take the load off of what we're doing. So tonight, I'd like to introduce Ben Howell. Ben comes to us from Town of Marshall, where he worked for nine years, most recently as Long Range Planning Manager overseeing long range and transportation planning for the town. He's also served as President of North Carolina Chapter of American Planning Association from January 1, 19, to December 31 of 2020. While working for Marshall, he has worked to secure over $10 million in federal transportation funding for roads and sidewalks, worked with regional partners to secure over $100 million in the NC DOT State Transportation Program funding for roads and sidewalks in the town. He has managed the adoption of the town's comprehensive transportation plan, public transportation study, and most recently was overseeing the implementation of the town's microtransit service that is scheduled to launch October 2nd this year. Welcome aboard, Ben.
Well, and say thank you for having me here, and I look forward to working for the town.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. All right, next up, we have a lifesaving award-recognizing police officer, Ashton Anderson.
Several months ago, I stood before you with two of our officers who had gone the extra mile to possibly save someone's life, was an overdose victim, and tonight I'm here to honor Ashton Anderson and some efforts he had recently regarding a similar circumstance. On Sunday, August 8th, at about 3:30 in the morning, Officer Anderson was dispatched to a possible overdose at the Parkside Village Department Complex off Guy Road. Sergeant Evans, who is a sergeant, also responded with him. After they arrived, they located an open door to the apartment and announced themselves. They heard a female crying out for help from inside the department. They entered and located a female in the master bedroom attending to a male subject who was laying on the bed, who was not responsive and was pale and had started to turn a bluish color. Officer Anderson immediately retrieved an Narcan kit that he had in his possession, as all officers do, and immediately put it together and administered one dose to the victim. He also administered sternum rubs, and the victim regained consciousness. He also administered sternum rubs and the victim regained consciousness at the same time EMS, Johnston County EMS arrived, who also administered a second dose. And the subject regained full consciousness and was transported to Wakefield, where he ended up surviving. While we will never know what the end result would have been had Officer Anderson not done what he did that night or that morning, I would argue that the subject probably wouldn't be alive today if it hadn't been for his quick action and quick thinking until Johnston County EMS could arrive. So tonight it's my honor and my privilege to present the department's life-saving award to Ashton Anderson. Great.
Okay. Thank you, Officer Anderson, for all you've done for us and for setting an example of how to save a life. Next up, we've got our introduction of two new police Canines.
Now, if this don't go well, blame the Town Manager. I don't know if this has ever been done before, but we recently purchased two new police Canines, which have gotten our number up to three total. We have four, but we obviously retired one last week, who we will introduce later tonight as well, or honor later tonight as well. These dogs in this training was purchased with asset forfeiture funds and not taxpayer money. We partnered with Orchard Noel Kennels out of Andrew, North Carolina, who the owner is a good friend of mine and I've known for many, many years. He flew to Holland and handpicked the two dogs that I'm about to introduce to you, a Belgian Malinois and a German Shepherd. After returning to the United States, both dogs went through a thorough medical examination with a vet and the dogs and their handlers underwent 12 weeks of intense training. And I'm happy to say they all came to the training very well and recently graduated in a ceremony we had next door at the Clayton Center. And both dogs and their handlers are back now on patrol. So as a result, like I said before, we have increased our total dogs to three with Canine Raven and Victoria Lee as Raven's handler, who was recently honored by the local news channel for being the first all-female Canine Team. So I will introduce Officer Morris, who's the handler, and this is Canine Titan, who is a two-year-old German Shepherd.
So Titan's a two-year-old German Shepherd. He's from the Czech Republic and he's trained in tracking, article search, suspect apprehension, and drug work. Ready to roll? Yes, sir.
Our next Canine is Canine Tim, which is a two-year-old Belgian Malinois, and Officer Will Carter.
He does the same. More politics, tracking, and apprehension. He's a two-year-old Belgian Malinois from Holland.
And that is two of our newest members as well.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Tim and Titan. Next up, we have presentation of retirement resolution. This retirement resolution is going to be presented to Greg Tark, Police Chief, and Jamie Brantley, Police Officer for Police Canine Abel. Chief, did you have anything you want to say before I read the proclamation?
Yeah, I'm just going to give you a little background here, if that's okay. Canine Abel recently retired last week on August 31st. He has been a member of the Clayton Police Department since April 11th of 2014. He has been a faithful member of the department for over seven years, served this town and community well. We recently celebrated Abel's retirement at a reception at the Police Department last week. I want to personally thank Abel and Officer Brantley for their service. And I want to thank Officer Brantley for his dedication and service as a Canine handler. As many of you know, that is a 24-hour job. When he's off or he's at home, he's still having to train the dog, as all these handlers do. So I wanted to recognize the effort and the dedication that he's put into the Canine program over the past seven years as well. Officer Brantley was recently promoted to detective and will begin a new assignment here pretty soon. So on behalf of the Police Department, I wanted to present Officer Brantley with a plaque and a chatted box with Abel's badge on it.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. At this time, I'll read the retirement resolution. Whereas Canine Abel is owned by the Town of Clayton and whereas Canine Abel has faithfully served the town and its citizens for seven years, and whereas Canine Abel will retire from his position as Police Canine effective September 1st, 2021, and whereas the mayor and town council by this resolution wish to express its great appreciation to Canine Abel for service, loyalty, and dedication to the Town of Clayton, now therefore it be resolved that the Town of Clayton in accord with North Carolina General Statute 160A-266 declares Canine Abel to be surplus property upon retirement from service and authorizes his assigned handler, Jamie Brantley, to take ownership of Canine Abel upon his execution of a hold harmless agreement to provide proper care for the dog for the remainder of the life of the animal. By executing that agreement, Jamie Brantley will assume all liability and responsibility for the dog. Duly resolved this 7th day of September 2021 while in regular session. Mr. Bunge, I'll come in.
I was just wanting to know, Abel's going to retire. What's he going to do? Has he got a condo at Myrtle or?
Anyway, my wife already found a pool on day one. She's already been trying to find a fit. You'll live a good life and retire by tomorrow.
Thank y'all for your service. Thank y'all.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
I do want to say to all of you, thank you for your continued support and for recognizing our folks. Many of them are here tonight, so thank you.
I want to thank all the officers who came tonight, the staff, civilian staff from the Police Department and all their support because you're a large division of the town and often you're the first interaction public has with the town. And we appreciate everything you do for us. We'll move along to public hearings. Items 6, A, B, C, and yeah, A, B, and C, we have a recommendation to continue to October 4th. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to move to October 4th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to move public hearings 6, A, B, and C to October 4th. Is there any comment? All in favor?
Any opposed?
And the motion carries. Next up, we have item 6D, Champion East rezoning.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, members of the planning, members of the town council. Let me introduce myself for the record. My name is Jeff Keynes, Land use planner for the Town of Clayton. I'm here to present tonight the Champion East Rezone, project number 202097RZ. Just for a brief, we're further away from this thing. Hopefully we're, hopefully we're good. This rezone has been left, has been kind of in limbo for quite a while, hence the 2020 number on it. So long story short, the applicant wishes to conclude the rezone process and rezone the entire properties here. So as you can see, the request is to rezone approximately 1.85 acres. It is broken into two pieces, into two different zones, the IO to the north and R8 to the south. Here we go. I'm trying to play with new technology today. So the north is currently zone IO, the bottom is, bottom half is R6, is R8. The applicant wishes to rezone the entire section into R6 zoning, which is consistent with, with properties across the street on Champion Street. If you recall, there was a project called Champion West, which is that large piece of property with the R6 on it and similar project in nature. Currently, the applicant and the applicant representative is here tonight. If you have any questions to ask, he'll be more than happy, I'm sure, to come up and speak. Currently, this section right here into R6 has an active subdivision application. Since it was proposed pre-160D, the applicant has chosen the choice and would like it to be resolved, reviewed, and approved if possible through the Planning Director side administration. However, in order to do that, we have to rezone it. So as you can see, the proposed zone, R6 for the entire side, the top part does have an active subdivision on it. Here's a current view from Google Streets. You see is currently vacant. It is still currently vacant and it's been that way for, for quite a while. And looking at the long-range plan for the consistency compatibility, this area is zone high-density residential slash community center, which again is consistent with the properties surrounding this, north, south, east, and west. The, the point of this type of comprehensive plan designation is to provide a transition between lower-density residential to a more commercial-type use. And this will fit right into it if it's rezoned and if the subdivision is approved. I believe it's a townhome-type product. And in review, again, the staff does recommend approval of this project. When the planning board heard this quite a while ago, they did recommend approval as well of the rezone request. With that, I will answer any questions that you may have. And if not, if you wish to speak with the applicant's representative, be more than happy to bring them up.
Case, this has been noted as a public hearing. We'll ask to hear from the applicant. Do you want to hear from, do you want to hear from the applicant?
It's their option. This is a public hearing. If they'd like to speak, now's the time for the applicant to speak. If not, then.
Your choice, Donny.
It's a public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Donnie Adams, Adams &amp; Hodg Engineering. The part that is O and I, that is intended to rezone to R6 and move forward, which Jeff said is current subdivision, it'd be a townhome project, somewhat similar to, as he mentioned, Champion West just across Champion Street. The remainder lots, they are currently R8 and just rezoning them to R6, again, trying to provide a transition. The R6 is a little more friendly on some of the setbacks, the desired use, but see those still remaining as single-family uses. It's consistent with everything we're doing, is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
That being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have on it. Any questions for the applicant? Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Grant.
Under the approval criteria, one of the questions is, it has been determined that the legal purposes for which the zonings exist are not violated. And the response that was given was verbatim to what that item was. Could you elaborate? I think I know the answer, but just for the record.
Yes, the legal purposes are here for the uses that are allowed in the zoning industry. Intentions are residential use.
I thought that would be the answer, but I just want to be sure.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? As this has been noted as a public hearing, anybody wishing to speak for or against the project, please step forward, state your name for the clerk. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for a vote. As this is legislative and not quasi-judicial, this is a legislative vote.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, after considering the recommendation, planning board and planning director, I've moved to approve case 202097-RZ.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any comment? All in favor?
Do you want to include this consistency statement in the motion?
And to approve the statement of consistency and reasonable, including the agenda fact.
So noted. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next up, we're, we adjusted the agenda, so we do item 6F first, which is going to be the annexation request for Johnston Prep Charter High School annexation. And the president, the planning department is going to present that to us.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Everett.
I would like to go ahead and recuse myself from voting for the Johnston Prep Charter, seeing that I am a board member for the Johnston Charter Academy, which is also a subsidiary for the National Heritage Academy.
So noted, Mr. Everett. And I will be doing the same thing as I'm on the board for the Johnston Prep. So, but as far as we'll consult Mr. Attorney, that still gives us three voting members, so we should be just fine for the vote.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, members of the town council. Again, my name is Jeff Keynes, Planner for the Town of Clayton. I'm here to present tonight the annexation request for Johnston County, for Johnston Preparatory High School, file number 202172ANX. The property is located on Highway 70 Business on the south side of town. It's approximately 38 acres in size. As noted on the location, it's on the west side of Business 70, south of downtown and across the street from Gordon Road. The close-up of the property highlighted in red, I have to have this little highlight tool, so I'm kind of having fun playing with it. So it's highlighted in red right there, as you can see where the proper location is. Tonight's goal is to annex the property into the town. I will be receiving town services and the following application will be to rezone it, but we have to do, first things first, for the annexation. And then I'll be back to have the property rezoned to its requested zoning application. So with that, take any questions? Just sign out the applicant and applicant's representative is here tonight. If you have any questions, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to answer them for you.
As this has been noted as a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, approach and state your name for the clerk. Madam Clerk, do they need to sign, sign in?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Keynes, for your presentation. Just as a point of clarification, could I just see a show of hands of who is a voting member for this? Because I know there's a couple of recusals, so I wanted to. Because I know there's a couple of recusals, so we want to... And then Mr. Holder as well?
Okay, thank you. And good evening. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 421 Bevel Street in Raleigh. Tonight, I'm representing the applicant for this project, which is National Heritage Academies. With me tonight are Bob Dunson, who is a representative of NHA. We also have Amy Chacario, whose last name I probably butchered, but she is a traffic engineer with Wade Trim. And finally, we have Mr. Dylan Smith, an engineer with Valentine Associates. This rezoning is associated with an annexation, so that the site can gain access to municipal utilities like water and sewer. Because of the annexation into the town, we need also to apply for initial Town of Clayton zoning on the property, and your professional staff has done a great job guiding some of our decisions on this project. The first place they led us was to the comprehensive plan to determine what zoning districts would fit the call of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan shows this area as an employment center, which is an area that should provide locations for primary employment and economic development opportunities. Generally speaking, appropriate zoning for this designation would be more business-oriented. But your staff recognized that the majority of this site is set back from the highway and mostly surrounded or borders residential areas. As a result, they had the opinion that a less intense but still non-residential zoning district would be the most appropriate district for this parcel, because it would act as a transitional use between residentially zoned properties to the north and west and the business-oriented uses that will develop towards the highway to the east. And we agree with this thoughtful analysis and therefore have requested an O-I zoning for this parcel. Aside from the zoning just being consistent with the town's long-range plans, I also think that the proposed use should be a welcome addition to the town. You may not be familiar with NHA specifically, but they operate Johnston Charter Academy, which is a K-8 school here in Clayton. And in the short term, their plan for this site is to build a new high school on the property, and that would serve about an additional 800 students. The site is large enough for a second school site, so in the future works, they intend to pursue a K-8 school for more than 750 students. So, on this property, NHA could, in the future, serve nearly 1,600 K-12 students here in the town of Clayton. I think everyone is aware of the challenges with the school system here in Johnston County. There are 14 elementary schools, four middle schools, and four high schools, which are capped for the 2020-21 school year in Johnston County. So, obviously, the demand is there for more schools. A new public high school should help alleviate some of that demand in the short term, and a new K-8 in the future could help accommodate some of the additional demand that you're experiencing here in Johnston County. We did have a hearing in front of the planning board in July. An out-of-state property owner to our north expressed concerns about potential trespassing or the devaluation of her property for a non-residential application. I think the planning board recognized that this project poses no additional threat of trespass and that a non-residential project is unlikely to devalue her property for a non-residential project. If anything, it may make her property more attractive for non-residential. Moreover, there is an undevelopable 50-foot-wide easement for a gas line, which runs in her property adjacent to our site for the full length of the property. So, this project will not have any impact on the viability of her property for a non-residential project, and in recognition of that, I believe, the planning board recommended approval because there really are no issues with the proposed project. Overall, we think this project is a good one for Clayton. The zoning request makes sense in the context of the area regardless of the applicant, but the site is ideal for additional schools. The site has access to a major thoroughfare and is located at an existing stoplight. The demand for more educational opportunities in Clayton cannot be overstated, and I believe this project is coming at exactly the right time for the town of Clayton. I want to thank you for your time tonight. Our team is available to answer any questions you may have, and we hope to have your support on a vote tonight. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Michael Smith. Good evening. I live in one of the properties nearby, but I have a couple of concerns about the proposed use, and I'm not sure if this would tie better with 6E or 6F on the agenda, since they are tied together, but I figured I'd go ahead and throw it out here now. My first concern has to do with safety for a public school, or for any school for that matter. The only entrance and exit to that property is along that little strip from Highway 70 that's about a quarter of a mile long. So, if there was a traffic jam at the bottleneck of that little strip, and then there was an emergency at that location, whether it's an active shooter, a fire, or whatever, you're going to have problems with people getting in and out with emergency crews and things like that. And in this day and age, that's a bigger concern than it was 20, 30, 40 years ago. So, I just wanted to put that out there, because I find that long driveway coming in to be an issue. Second, with the proposed use as a school, the Wise Recycling Facility is nearby. I don't know if any of y'all live near that, but I do, and it does present a lot of noise a lot of days, and I think that would be detrimental to having schools on that location. Not against having schools, more schools in Johnston County. I just don't think that that's the best site for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Bob Dunson with National Heritage Academies. Appreciate you listening to us and having us present our project. I'd like to speak to... First of all, Neil did a very nice job. I won't bore you with any more details. I thought he did a good job explaining who we are and why we want to build here. As far as the safety issues that Mr. Smith brought up, there are two points of access on the site. One is a brand-new road that'll go in. The second is already in. It's the driveway that comes off on the south end of the property. So, that property has an access that's been there for generations. It's currently a gravel driveway that goes all the way back. Our goal would be to provide a secondary access point for fire access off of that driveway. It's very easy to do without making any improvements to it, other than just sprucing it up and making sure it's got good access. People live on that right now, so at the very least, they'd end up with a driveway that's a little bit more, in better shape, not full of potholes. But that access, when we get done building a school, what we'd like to do is gate it off, and that provide a secondary access for fire emergency and our life safety, which is, as Mr. Smith pointed out, very important. So, that allows us to have those two points of access in case anything was to happen to the primary drive that goes in. Keep in mind, too, the primary drive that goes in is actually three lanes wide. So, in the event that, in the very short area, something was to happen, there are still three lanes, full 12-foot-wide lanes that are running through there. So, the majority of any type of event that would happen at that specific point, we have two ways to negate it. You can come in from two different directions, if need be. So, we'll also be extending public water all the way up through there. The water comes in off of Highway 70. We'll be dragging it right up alongside of the road. There'll be hydrants along the way, and that'll be a... Basically, that's a public line, if you would. So, I believe right now it's a 12-inch, which should provide plenty of pressure to handle any hydrant. So, those are the two pieces that I think address the safety part of that. As far as the Wise Recycling Center, it's kind of interesting. So, I thought that might be an issue myself, so I've been out there lots of times. I've spoken and been at Mr. Taylor's property. We'll be talking with him. We already have been talking to try to get the easement extended to pick up the sanitary sewer that sits in the back of that property. So, I've been there at the middle of the day a couple of different times when they're absolutely doing heavy metal recycling over there. The nice thing is that plant doesn't sit next to the school. It sits all the way through the woods, all the way across on the other corner, which is very helpful. And it's a very thick woods. The delineations that we've had done on the property have already defined roughly the back, I don't know, 300 to 450 feet, which would be the west half that comes off of the creek that's back there, is all protected wetlands anyway. So, that'll remain intact, and that provides a very natural, very thick, and unfriendly buffer for anybody who's trying to make their way through that. So, I think that really helps that out. We also have schools in other parts of the country that are associated with industrial properties as well. And you have to be careful. You have to understand what you're getting into, and you need to make sure that there are some of those positions with the safety positions with the wetlands and all that kind of stuff, but those aren't going to go away. So, that really speaks to the noise, I think. So, that's it. If there are any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? All right. No one else wishing to speak. I will turn it... I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for discussion. Question and answer. All right. Mr. Dunson.
Mr. Mayor, after considering the recommendation of the planning board and planning director, I move to approve 2021-96-O-A and to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness included in the agenda pack.
This was just the annexation.
Yeah, this is... Hold on. This is just... I'm sorry. I needed to state clarification. We went backwards, yes. So, we were just looking for a motion for adoption of the ordinance 2021-0903, which is the annexation request. That's okay.
This one I read.
No, you read O-A.
I thought it was a motion. We went backwards. Your annexation persons had flipped 6E and 6F, so that was supposed to be the annexation presentation.
You need to do the other one, the R-Z one.
No, you need to do A-N-X-F, adoption of ordinance 2021-0903. I don't think that's a... I don't think that's a... This one isn't prepared.
It's not.
Yes, that's just rezoning and other stuff for official verbiage for the record.
Which one are we doing?
The adoption of the ordinance.
And then G.
F, right there.
Got it.
Just the annexation ordinance. Sorry.
I move to we adopt the ordinance 20... I'm sorry, 2021-09-03.
Second. We have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance 2021-0903. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Now, we're going to jump back over to item 6E, which is the 2021-71-RZ Johnston Prep Charter High School Rezone.
Good evening, Mayor McLeod, members of the town council. Introduce myself for the record. Jeff Caines, town planner for the town of Clayton. Tonight, I'm here to present the Johnston Preparatory High School Rezone Project, 2021-71-RZ. As we just heard a couple of minutes ago, the property has now been annexed. Needs to be recorded, but it's still annexed into the town. The request tonight is to rezone the property to office institutional. I'm going to go off script here, since we talked about where it was, we talked about where it's located, but I also want to also stress that this is a rezone to a specific zoning district. We're not looking at a site for a high school. We're not looking at a site plan. If this property is rezoned to office institutional, the applicant did a great job describing the overall process and the project that may be there, but tonight I'm just here to say this will be rezoned from one color to another color, and that is a general rezone overall. If the applicant moves forward with the project and proposes a preparatory high school as indicated, that application would be reviewed administratively with staff, and it will go through the full technical review committee process to make sure all of the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed to make sure it meets the code. But I want to just make sure that this presentation just is simply on the rezone itself and not the high school site plan or details with the high school. So, just wanted to make sure on that one. As shown before, the current zoning district under the current zoning map is a large portion of it is RE residential estate. Towards Business 70, you do see the B3 in the red, and the hash marks is a thoroughfare overlay district. If rezoned, the property would turn to this blue color, office institutional. The thoroughfare overlay zone will remain, which is hard to... It's just tucked underneath the blue right there, but the proposal is to change the RE and the B3 into an O-I zoning district, which would allow a high school or an educational facility as their outright permitted use, which would be reviewed again administratively. Here's a view from Google Street View. You can see it is currently vacant or used as agricultural purposes. And looking on the future land use map, as the applicant's representative stated, is identified as employment center. We did take a close look at it. We feel that it does meet the need for employment center, although it's a school, it does employ a number of individuals there. We also have the hopes and dreams that maybe this school can partner with surrounding businesses as some sort of collaboration in the future. Griffles, Novo, Bear, Caterpillar is all that part, is all in that part of town. And although it's not indicated in conversations with the applicant, we're hopeful that maybe there's some sort of collaboration between these high schools and educational facilities and local businesses for some sort of educational purposes. But anyway, employment center is what is currently identified on the future land use map. And with that, as a short presentation, staff has reviewed it. We do recommend approval of the rezone request and taking this to the planning board. The planning board did recommend approval of the zoning request as well. That concludes my part of the presentation. More than happy to meet, answer any questions that you may have, and as you know, the applicant and representative are here to answer any questions.
Awesome. Questions for staff? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this has been noted as a public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Hello again. My name is Neil Gosh, representative for the applicant, NHA. Just wanted to say thanks again to Mr. Caines for his presentation, and that NHA looks forward to submitting a site plan shortly to open a... Or to develop a high school on the site, and in the future, a K-8 school. And again, we hope to have your support tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. No one else wishing to speak? I'll turn it over to council for their discussion. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, since this is a separate item from before, you were not in the room. Councilman Everett and I had recused ourselves from the previous vote, and I wish to do the same for this vote, as I'm on the board of directors, and he is for the parent company as well.
Okay. Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, I've got the right one this time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dunson.
After considering the recommendation, planning board and planning director, I move to approve case 2021-71-RZ and to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness included in the agenda pack.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the rezoning of the property. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We're going to call for a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, like Rich said, Lewis Duffy, I'm the assistant program manager.
Can we get that door closed?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if that doesn't work, I'm going to let you come closer to the mic.
All right, that's fine. So like Rich said, I'll give you a little update. As a refresher, our capital improvements program has about three components to it. The first being the Nuneus River Water Reclamation Facility. An update on that, we're marching towards a 60% design milestone here on October 1st. Things are moving great. The second component is Little Creek Conveyance and that has two parts to it. It's the pump station and then the gravity force main that's going to take water from our existing Little Creek facility down to the new plant. That's about to be bid out in the next 30 to 40 days. And then the third component is the ECIA conveyance, which that's a pump station improvement. Then also another force main that's going cross-country down from East Clayton Industrial Area. And we're still assessing some routes, but that's where we stand right now. So our team that we've built, we have HDR as our owner's advisor with us today. We have the director for their team, Adam Sharp. Our design builder is Gannett Fleming, again, the project director, Craig, oh, moved on. Craig's with us today. And then for Little Creek, Withersavonella was the engineer on record. And then they are also the engineer with the subcontractor of McKimmick Reed on the ECIA project. And we are providing our own power for the Nuneus Water Reclamation Facility. But it's a robust team. We're proud of it. We've been doing a lot of hard work. And again, we have our financial team that's on board, legal. And so the layout here, you have the noose on the right side of the screen. The structures that are going to be built in this first phase, which is the six MGD phase, is in gray with the expansion to 10, 10 MGD highlighted in red. Down there in the right hand, you got the influent pump station, pumps it up to the top and then it flows down by gravity. So this is a, sorry. This is a 3D modeling of, of the plant. As you can see, it's progressing very nicely. The road that's kind of on the bottom left would be the entrance. It'd be a gate there. That's the admin building right there on the right. Obviously, you have the, the bioreactor there in the middle. And yeah, it's, it's going well and, and we're really happy with it. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Adam Sharp.
Thank you, Lewis. Good evening, Mayor McLeod, members of the town council. Again, I'm still Jeff Caines with the planning department. I'm here to present the downtown parking text amendment. And this is an application that was directed to us by the town council. If you recall, the town council held, held a special meeting on July 21st of this year to discuss the downtown parking requirements. And also we, since it was at town hall, it was a large room and the many citizens were in attendance to listen and to give general input at that time. At that meeting, the council directed staff to take a look at the downtown parking requirements. And it was for off-street parking for non-residential development only, non-residential development. And at the time, it was given that we have a 50% reduction from its current zoning requirements, which was, there's no reduction. So what we're proposing tonight currently reads as a 50% reduction for parking requirements in the downtown overlay district. We were given direction. We came up with the UDC text amendment. At that meeting in July, the mayor, who sits with us tonight, also agreed to appoint a citizen committee to further study, propose additional changes to downtown parking. To my understanding, a meeting will, will soon take place. I don't have the exact date.
September 14th.
September 14th. Okay, so we'll have a meeting September 14th with citizens of all types. So we'll have a nice mix of individuals on that committee. The planning board did hear this request at their August 23rd meeting and they did recommend approval of the 50% reduction to the council for the downtown parking overlay district. So that's kind of a recap of where we started, what took place from staff's level, and now we're coming back to the council to take a closer look at the text amendment, which everyone should have their, in their packet. And basically it says there should be 50, the 50% reduction in parking requirements for the downtown overlay district for non-residential developments. With that, I'll, I'll stop right there, answer any questions you may have. I believe there are other citizens that may want to participate, but that all ended up, all suffered there.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions or comments for staff? Not yet. All right. This has been, thank you, sir. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right. No one wishing to speak, close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to see if we could modify to remove the parking requirements for the downtown overlay excluding residential, if we could put that language in instead of the 50%. And I'd like to make that as a motion.
All right. We have a motion to do away with all of the downtown business district parking overlay with the exception of residential requirements. Is there any further discussion?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under all business is the amend design-build contract wastewater treatment facility.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I just want to confirm with town attorney, with that last motion, was there anything we need to do with revol, I guess, updating the actual language, reading that in or not?
Instead of a 50% reduction, it would basically eliminate the parking design, which is going to be motion.
That is my understanding.
Eliminate any parking requirement.
With the exception of residential.
Yeah.
All right. We're clear. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Mayor, council, I'm going to ask Louis Duffy to come up and start our presentation. We do have several members of our team with him and he will go ahead and introduce, but it's been several months since we've given you a comprehensive update for the wastewater treatment plant project. So you'll be receiving an update as well as at the end, a request to modify the current contract with Gannett Fleming for the design-build portions, portion of the program. But Louis and team will take it from here and explain that a little more.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, like Rich said, Louis Duffy, I'm the assistant program manager.
Can we get that door closed?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if that doesn't work, I'm going to let you come closer to the mic.
All right, that's fine. So like Rich said, I'll give you a little update. As a refresher, our capital improvements program has about three components to it. The first being the Nuneus River Water Reclamation Facility. An update on that, we're marching towards a 60% design milestone here on October 1st. Things are moving great. The second component is Little Creek Conveyance and that has two parts to it. It's the pump station and then the gravity force main that's going to take water from our existing Little Creek facility down to the new plant. That's about to be bit out in the next 30 to 40 days. And then the third component is the ECIA conveyance, which that's a pump station improvement. Then also another force main that's going cross-country down from East Clayton Industrial Area. And we're still assessing some routes, but that's where we stand right now. So our team that we've built, we have HDR as our owner's advisor with us today. We have the director for their team, Adam Sharp. Our design builder is Gannett Fleming, again, the project director, Craig, oh, moved on. Craig's with us today. And then for Little Creek, Withersavonella was the engineer on record. And then they are also the engineer with the subcontractor of McKimmick Reed on the ECIA project. And we are providing our own power for the Nuneus Water Reclamation Facility. But it's a robust team. We're proud of it. We've been doing a lot of hard work. And again, we have our financial team that's on board, legal. And so the layout here, you have the noose on the right side of the screen. The structures that are going to be built in this first phase, which is the six MGD phase, is in gray with the expansion to 10, 10 MGD highlighted in red. Down there in the right hand, you got the influent pump station, pumps it up to the top and then it flows down by gravity. So this is a, sorry. This is a 3D modeling of, of the plant. As you can see, it's progressing very nicely. The road that's kind of on the bottom left would be the entrance. It'd be a gate there. That's the admin building right there on the right. Obviously, you have the, the bioreactor there in the middle. And yeah, it's, it's going well and, and we're really happy with it. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Adam Sharp.
Thank you, Louis. Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's been, been a couple of months since I've been in front of you. I think, you know, what Louis has shown us is there's been a lot of progress to date in just a short amount of time. I think, you know, what I'm here to talk to you a little bit about today is, you know, the progress, where we're at, the realities of the market that we're dealing with from a construction standpoint and what it means to the project. Then ultimately how we're, you know, looking to potentially restructure the execution approach through a contract amendment with the design builder, Gannett Fleming, to position this project to put it in the best foot forward for the greatest success of the project. So the, the biggest piece of information that everybody kind of goes right to is, is costs. And I would tell you that I don't have the exact date.
September 14th.
September 14th. Okay, so we'll have a meeting September 14th with citizens of all types. So we'll have a nice mix of individuals on that committee. The Planning Board did hear this request at their August 23rd meeting, and they did recommend approval of the 50% reduction to the council for the downtown parking overlay district. So that's kind of a recap of where we started, what took place from staff's level, and now we're coming back to the council to take a closer look at the text amendment, which everyone should have in their packet. And basically, it says there should be 50% reduction in parking requirements for the downtown overlay district for non-residential developments. With that, I'll stop right there, answer any questions you may have. I believe there are other citizens that may want to participate, but that all ended up all so far there.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions or comments for staff? Not yet. All right, this has been, thank you, sir. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak, close the public hearing, and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to see if we could modify to remove the parking requirements for the downtown overlay excluding residential, if we could put that language in instead of the 50%. And I'd like to make that as a motion.
All right. We have a motion to do away with all of the downtown business district parking overlay with the exception of residential requirements. Is there any further discussion?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hall in favor say aye. Opposed, like some. Motion carries. Up next, under Old Business, is the amend design-build contract wastewater treatment facility.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to confirm with town attorney, with that last motion, was there anything we need to do with, I guess, updating the actual language, reading that in, or not?
Looking at UDC 155.401b8, instead of a 50% reduction, it would basically eliminate the parking design, which is going to be motion.
That is my understanding.
Eliminate any parking requirement.
With the exception of residential.
Clear.
All right, we're clear. All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm going to ask Louis Duffy to come up and start our presentation. We do have several members of our team with him, and he will go ahead and introduce, but it's been several months since we've given you a comprehensive update for the wastewater treatment plant project. So you'll be receiving an update, as well as at the end, a request to modify the current contract with Gannett Fleming for the design-build portions, portion of the program. But Louis and team will take it from here and explain that a little more.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, like Rich said, Louis Duffy, I'm the assistant program manager.
Can we get that door closed?
Yeah.
And if that doesn't work, I'm going to let you come closer to the mic.
All right, that's fine. So like Rich said, I can give you a little update. As a refresher, our capital improvements program has about three components to it, the first being the Nunez River Water Reclamation Facility. An update on that, we're marching towards a 60% design milestone here on October 1st. Things are moving great. The second component is Little Creek Conveyance, and that has two parts to it. It's the pump station and then the gravity force main that's going to take water from our existing Little Creek facility down to the new plant. That's about to be bid out in the next 30 to 40 days. And then the third component is the ECIA conveyance, which that's a pump station improvement, and then also another force main that's going cross-country down from East Clayton Industrial Area. And we're still assessing some routes, but that's where we stand right now. So our team that we've built, we have HDR as our owner's advisor with us today, we have the director for their team, Adam Sharp. Our design builder is Gannett Fleming, again, the project director, Craig, oh, moved on. Craig's with us today. And then for Little Creek, Wetherspoons was the engineer on record, and then they are also the engineer with the subcontractor of McKimmicreid on the ECIA project. And we are providing our own power for the Nunez Water Reclamation Facility. But it's a robust team, we're proud of it, we've been doing a lot of hard work. And again, we have our financial team that's on board, legal. And so the layout here, you got the noose on the right side of the screen, the structures that are going to be built in this first phase, which is the six MGD phase, is in gray with the expansion to 10 MGD highlighted in red. Down there in the right hand, you got the influent pump station, pumps it up to the top, and then it flows down by gravity. So this is a, sorry, this is a 3D modeling of the plant. As you can see, it's progressing very nicely. The road that's kind of on the bottom left would be the entrance, it'd be a gate there. That's the admin building right there on the right. Obviously, you have the bioreactor there in the middle. And yeah, it's going well, and we're really happy with it. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Adam Sharp.
Thank you, Louis. Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's been a couple of months since I've been in front of you. I think, you know, what Louis has shown us is there's been a lot of progress to date in just a short amount of time. I think, you know, what I'm here to talk to you a little bit about today is, you know, the progress, where we're at, the realities of the market that we're dealing with from a construction standpoint, and what it means to the project, and then ultimately how we're, you know, looking to potentially restructure the execution approach through a contract amendment with the design builder, Gannett Fleming, to position this project to put it in the best foot forward for the greatest success of the project. So the biggest piece of information that everybody kind of goes right to is costs. And I'm going to tell you the difference between these bar charts in a second here, so there's some understanding. So we've got two charts there, and anybody behind me that can't see on this one, the one on the left, the 105, is from October 2020. That estimate was based on the environmental, or excuse me, engineering report, which was a preliminary development of all of the program elements, from the pump station to the treatment plant, and an initial understanding of what the requirements were to build this facility and the associated infrastructure. Okay? And the different colors represent the different components of this program that Louis pointed out. You've got blue, which is the treatment plant, red, which is the Little Creek pump station and conveyance lines, orange for the ECA stuff, and then green is all your professional services cost to take, to get these things done, design, permitting, acquisition, so on. See the line on the right, and that line, that bar is significantly different than the prior line as of July 2021. Now, we've got different states of these estimates, as far as, you've got some bid-ready packages, ready to go out the door in 30 days, you've got some that are based on a 30% design. So what's causing those differences? Just since October, just in the last couple of months, obviously, we've progressed this project significantly, we've garnered more understanding of what the market conditions are and what the impact truly of the COVID-19 pandemic has had on the construction market and the materials market. We've gained a greater clarity of scope for this project, as well as we've assessed and ascertained the impact of the planned schedule for this project on the costs in regards to acceleration from the contracting community. Funding package here, you know, I think Louis showed you that financial team, that financial team's been working hard to put together a financial package to fund this project that makes a lot of sense. State revolving fund, money through the state, $110 million. That's about, that's about the best you can do from the state. They don't award, they don't typically award that much for one project to any one entity, and that comes at a 1% rate. So a great, great opportunity there. American Recovery Act funding allocation, the current state budget of $20 million, that's fortunate, that's grant money. You know, the remainder here that you're showing the deficit, or the difference here, I guess, in the arrow, that's going to be made up. There is potential for additional SRF money, there's a lot of things that have to align to make that happen. Otherwise, the gap that's being worked through on that by that financial team is going to be looking at revenue bonds. So let me talk a little bit about, well, I guess, before I go back and talk about what's the drivers for some of these cost differences is, you know, let's put some reality, reality to these costs that we're seeing, okay? These are three other greenfield plants being built in the state of North Carolina. You know, one for Johnston County, right down the street, their project just went up the bid. They'll have hard bids in the next 30 days for their project, so we'll see where that comes in at. You see the Towns plant in the middle, Charlotte Water is building another facility, greenfield plant, quite a bit bigger, double the size, but another metric here. You could see the total cost and some of the elements that are similar or different from the Towns facility, but ultimately, if we look on that unit cost basis, we're not, we're not looking at a difference of $10 and $20 per gallon, you know, these unit estimates are providing an indication that across the market, across the state, these are the costs that are coming in. And there's a lot of factors that I'm going to talk about in a second that are driving And I'm going to cruise through some of these slides here, just, you know, stop me if you've got questions as I'm walking through, I'd be happy to take any as I go. You know, when we think about the pandemic and the impact here, you know, obviously, we've all seen a ripple effect of what this pandemic has done. You know, if we, if we work all the way back to, you know, sort of the commodities that are important from a construction standpoint, you know, when there are manufacturing and factory shutdowns, that has ramifications that eventually compound over time. And there's been a delayed recovery. As you can see, I've highlighted in those yellow bars, you know, when that first estimate was inked in October 2020, and where we are now with the current estimates, and the trajectory of all those lines, you know, from the Construction Association as in regards to, you know, the costs and bids for construction projects and the slope of those lines. You know, overall project, you see 20% increases. If you look at specific commodities at the bottom, you know, much greater, greater increases, you know, steel, copper, aluminum, you know, significant increases there. Transportation and delivery, you know, just getting the products to the site, diesel costs, transportation truckers, you know, there's a shortage in truckers actually moving things, container shipping, the things that used to cost $1,000 a container are now costing $8,000. You know, pieces of equipment, specialty equipment that are required to this facility, like a UV unit, you know, it used to go for $400,000, now they go for $700,000 a unit. Another one there. Another long list, you know, we're hearing from, you know, vendors, you know, six-month lead times, the lock prices in for five days, maybe some one day. We've learned ductile iron piping, you know, six-month lead time, you know, we're having to make adjustments and changes for the reality of the market right now. You know, things like the Texas freeze has impacted plastics and resins impacting PVC, fiberglass, you know, Suez Canal, you know, all these things have unfortunately have had a cascading effect through the market. Issue here is, is if we look historically, these aren't always short-lived events, you know, they can last one year, they can last two years. We're one year in, hey, there's nothing telling us that won't be another year of this type of cycle. So what do we, so probably the point you most care about is what are we, what are we doing about these, all these externalities that are impacting this project? You know, we're working with Craig and Gannett Fleming, you know, working through a procurement plan, looking at early packages, how do we procure things early so we don't have to pay acceleration costs in the schedule months in the future? So we're having to look months and months into the future as far as procuring things now to be ready for that construction schedule, if everything's onsite and ready to go when those subcontractors are onsite. Looking at material selection, you know, I think, I think Craig, you told us, pre-engineered metal buildings, we looked at that, you know, 40-week lead time, you know, making changes, going to block buildings, okay? You know, looking at schedule and how we can manage that schedule with, with the options within the system to manage flows, existing flows, future flows, how do we manage those flows to be able to help us control this schedule some, to influence acceleration costs, influence and increase market competition with contractors? We've heard from several that they, a lot of contractors, I think we all know, the market's hot, there's a lot of work going on, contractors aren't interested in accelerated schedules, they aren't interested in big liquidated damages and contracts, they're not interested, you know, we need to drive up competition, not constrain it from a cost standpoint, as well as getting reliable contracting, contractors. So what this all boils down to is, a lot of the things I've just talked through is the practical realities that we're dealing with right now with this program. And we've worked, you know, HDR is your owner advisor, worked with staff and all the other project partners to help put together, you know, how we're going to reshape some of these project execution and delivery approach for the greatest success for the program. And that's, that's some of those changes that are in front of you today in the contract amendment number one for Gannett Fleming's design bill contract. I'm going to step through each of the changes we're looking, looking to make as part of this contract amendment, and see if you've got any questions on those that I can answer or Louis or Craig can answer for you. The first change we're looking to make is, initially, we had started this project out looking to lock in at a guaranteed maximum price at 60% design, and that would have happened in October, okay? We've realized we need to make, make a change on this item. The original design schedule was aggressive, hey? We needed to address some gaps in the, in the basis design report, town needed some time to make some critical decisions along the way. And this, this gives a lot of, lot of bandwidth, some bandwidth to be able to address that, drive up design quality and, and input from the town along the, along the way. You will ultimately be the owners of this facility at the end, your input is important. Typically, once you lock into that GMP, input slows down, okay? You're not really, you're not really in the driver's seat as much anymore, okay? Also, being able to move that to the 90% allows a better design to be put out to the market to bid, reducing contingency. So you don't have a bunch of subs baking in contingency because you've got a 60% design, it may not have all, you know, the routing, wiring, everything absolutely identified, they're going to cost in that uncertainty. Okay? That's change, change one there. Next one, I talked about early procurement, the original contract only identified seven early procurement packages. The goal is, is not to, not to specifically add 12 or 19 or whatever, it's to provide the town more flexibility in making decisions with the design builder, with other teams of what, what should be brought forward based on the lead times and the schedule for actually getting these materials onsite. Again, that's going to provide the town flexibility in decision-making, you know, and also be able to manage that schedule, those long lead hours, six months, a long time to wait for equipment if you've got folks onsite waiting for that to be installed, okay? Reality of this is, the town's going to commit to some more costs in advance of locking in the final GMP, that's a reality. The other piece we're asking to do is, as part of the Phase 1 contract, we're looking to pull the full design forward, okay? Those early work packages require more design, they need to be taken to 100% to take them out to bid, you know, we're buying a couple million dollars in tanks, you know, a couple million dollars in equipment, you know, we want that as close as possible so we get a firm price. You know, Gannett Fleming is going to be able to commit some more additional design resources to push this through, and ultimately, the town, this is not aligned with the town's original intent that Gannett Fleming would be the designer of record for this facility. Last one I'm going to talk about here is, you know, moving that substantial completion date to November 1, 2024. So that's, that's a change from October 23 to November 1, 2024. The original contract date didn't have weather days in it, that was a negotiable item and is a customary negotiable item as part of a construction contract. This, this timing is going to allow, you know, sequencing for this procurement plan, when those items get onsite, when they can be constructed, and when they can be installed, you know, aligned with that procurement plan, you know? The other piece is, is the goal is really to reduce that acceleration cost. We have heard from the contracting community that that could be up to 20%. 20% on a $100 million job, that's a lot of money to pay for acceleration. You've got crews out there seven days a week, 10 hours a day, that, that comes at a cost, at a premium. The other thing that we've heard too, just as a lack of interest in accelerated schedules, you know, liquidated damages costs that are high, you know, we want to drive up competition, we want to drive up interest in this project to get quality contractors as part of this community, as part of this project. And then reducing some of that schedule constraint is going to alleviate some of that and increase some of that market condition, okay? Reality of all of these is it requires some action from the council to make some of these changes. The other is, there will be some additional costs to actually make this happen, okay? One of the things that will have to be entertained by the council is expanding a treatment contract with the city of Raleigh to actually make this, make this allowable, make this schedule work, okay? So wanted to present the background behind some of these changes, wanted to provide you some of that information, provide some of the reality behind some of this. I'd be happy to answer any questions, you know, and Louis and Craig's here as well. So this time I'll take, I'll let us go to any discussion or questions.
All right, thank you, sir, Mr. Bond.
I don't know if this really pertains to you, I want to direct this back towards the staff now because we're pushing the schedule out to 24 now. What does that do to us with what we've got on the radar?
So that's one of the things that Adam alluded to in that last slide there. We have made a request into the city of Raleigh to increase our, the amount of flow that we can send to them. Right now, the current pipeline that we have is, it has a lot of potential to, potentially can add a lot of flow to it. There is going to be a time limitation, as well as a hard ceiling on that as well. So effectively, I hope to have an agreement be brought forward to you sometime in October. At the staff level, they're favorable, I've asked for 750,000 gallons per day more, that would help us bridge that gap of that additional year. So if our plant goes to 20, November of 2024, as Adam indicated, that would give us the ability to send some additional flow to Raleigh through that period so that our plant could basically buy us that year of time.
Are we still going to have to work with Johnston County?
Yes.
Are they willing to work with us?
So there's us and Johnston County's been a willing partner. You know, their project and their timeline is a big driver for our timeline. Once their new plan is online, we are limited in how much flow we can send to them as well. So we're tracking right along with them, like I think Louis or Adam said, they're bidding out, they're pretty much on the street, so we will know very quickly, one, what their total cost is, so we can recalibrate our numbers, but also what their, what their timeline is looking like in terms of a finish date so that we can align on our end. They're both been willing partners, we had a really good meeting a couple of weeks ago where we brought everybody in a room, just kind of hashed through it and figured out how we can make it to November of 24. And so we feel at this point with what is under our control, we've got a plan and a contingency plan, and even a contingency plan for the contingency plan. But again, some of it's going to take some, some additional agreements from our partners.
Cool. Anyone else? Mr. Holder?
I've got a question. I saw two figures on here, 105 million, 175 million. This proposed change in delivery date, I didn't hear anything about a reduction in our cost.
So we should have a new estimate, what, in, end of October, we should have a 60% estimate, so I don't have those numbers now. What we're doing, I mean, what we're going off of is, is positioning the project to capitalize on increased market competition, reducing the acceleration cost. We don't have that, that updated cost or a cost comparative right now.
I hear you asking us to approve additional costs going from 60% to 90%. Now, I hear 20, I saw 26% increase from, and that goes from 120 million, which is the original cost, 26% increase puts it up 150 something million, yet I see 175 million. Where does it stop climbing? You're asking us to commit, I don't know how many million dollars tonight, and I don't see a savings by making this change.
So everything you've seen tonight is, is, you know, all those estimates, you know, we, as the town's owner advisor, has pulled together from a variety of sources, you know, whether it's, all those teams on that org chart are feeding the overall program estimate of 175. You're absolutely correct in that we don't have an estimate of what those savings are or now. You know, and I, you know, I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you that the market is going, the market is, the construction market is driving a lot of this uncertainty and volatility. This is not an uncommon conversation, I'm not having every, with every client. I've got a client that a project went from 350 million to 500 million, you know, in the span of, you know, the same, similar time. you know, in the span of, you know, the same similar time period. Uh, this is not, not unprecedented as far as what's going other places. I don't have, I, I truly don't have a better answer on the cost component to provide you other than, you know, what you're seeing is not different than anywhere else. And I completely understand and appreciate your concerns of when does it stop? Um, when we, you know, make phone calls and call a pipe vendor and they tell us, well, we might be able to get you a pipe next year. Um, that has real ramifications for now you've got one person to get piped from and you know what happens when you have one supplier and lots of demand. Um, unfortunately, the, the, these economics of what's happened to date in the market are having significant implications for a lot of folks and how they're funding projects and having to make hard choice, make hard choices as far as, you know, what's actually included a project, what's excluded, what can be done in the future and how do we control what we can control? Um, it's probably not the answer you wanted to hear, but that, that's the answer I've got right now for you.
Which is no answer.
Exactly.
Which is no answer.
Yeah, there are a lot of externalities that we don't control.
Yeah, Mr. Holder, if I could add, um, that 175 number, you know, you noted there was about a 26% increase over the last year. We've taken from the best information we have, both from, you know, multiple economic sources as well as just industry discussions, you know, what those trajectories are going to look like by the time we have to buy these out. Clearly, nothing looks like it's necessarily coming down. You know, lumber peaked several months back and has come back down. A lot of the commodity prices, we're just not sure, certain at this point when they will either level off or come back. So we, we're trying to be conservative in that estimate at the 175, knowing that we've got to continually track it. I think the plan that Craig and his team, Gannett Fleming, have put together with these early packages, that's going to allow us to get to that, that certainty in the market or at least lock in the pricing that we know, we, or that we can at this point. So that as we're going along, kind of to the, to the point that Adam brought up, that 90% GMP that we're going to have, many of those packages are going to have already been, you know, signed, sealed, not delivered, but we will at least know exact pricing on a good portion of that plant. And I'll, I'll let Craig talk more specifically in terms of percentages if, if you want. But effectively, we're doing everything we can by setting it up this way to mitigate that risk by locking in as early as we can on the pricing, as well as using that ceiling of 175 at this point that we can work everything to with the hope that maybe things do come back down later next year or otherwise, as we're buying out some of the, some of the future packages. But unfortunately, with the competition unknown, as well as we've got two other pretty major wastewater projects going on right here in our backyard between one of the industrial users pre-treatment plant that is being, that is under construction as well as our partner in Johnston County. So we're all competing for the same resources and unfortunately, uh, in our current situation, the timeline, uh, you know, several of the other, uh, um, projects that Adam's referring to, some of these larger, um, larger projects that are being impacted, they have the luxury of being able to defer their projects a certain amount of time to, to allow for that certainty to come back into the market. On our timeline and with some of the agreements we have that are time limited, as well as our 1960s plant that is kind of on borrowed time at this point, unfortunately, we've got to move forward, um, with, again, a plan to, to provide as much certainty along the way as we can, knowing that we're going to have to make some, some tough decisions at some point in terms of what we can deliver and on what, and what the timeline is.
Well, to make this decision, it would seem to me we should expect a reduce, a reduction to the 175 million figure.
I, I would love to say that, that is the goal, obviously. Um, we feel like we've given ourselves enough ceiling there with the 175 number that we can work to it. Uh, but again, not knowing what the markets are going to do, you know, frankly, if they continue on a, you know, about a 5% a month or, or so increase on some of these material prices, um, we're going to, we're, we're going to, we're going to be utilizing some of that contingency, obviously.
What we know right now is we don't know what the cost is going to be. It could be 175, it could be 200 million. That scares me.
I agree.
That's going to be y'all's problem in December, but that scares me.
One of the things, again, with moving, with, with the, with the amendment for tonight, uh, the big thing there is being able to allow Gannett Fleming to continue forward on getting the design all the way through to the point where we will be able to have 90% plans, like basically full design plans by the time we're done, uh, that is going to give us the, the sharpest pencil that we will get, uh, for that component of the project. So that compiled with the Little Creek project that's getting ready to bid out, hopefully here between now and the end of the calendar year, those two data points will really bring that 175 number into, um, well, basically it'll clarify whether that number is the ceiling or if we've got to have some additional conversations.
Anyone else, Mr. Graham?
A couple of questions. Did, if I heard you right, is the pipe that we require from a sole source supplier?
No, no. I, I was giving, I was giving you an example of, uh, reduced, you know, reduced competition from suppliers because they just don't have, that there's no supply chain to get them the product. They're not getting the product from the manufacturer, so they've got, or they, or they've already committed a year's worth of pipe. Um, so, so we've heard those examples and I was giving you that one by way of example. Uh, that there, there is still competition out there, uh, but there's no certainty in how long that competition is there until we absolutely lock in, uh, and put some of these packages out to bid.
One, one comment there. We are limited with the type of funding we have to, to have to use certain types of vendors or certain suppliers. So that is one challenge overall with the program, certain elements of it. Uh, the other thing there to, to Adam's point, you know, six, eight months ago, when we started seeing that there were some issues in the market, plastic pipe, for instance, a lot of that's what a lot of people had specified for their projects. Once that became a scarcity during the resin, excuse me, the resin issues, a lot of them switched over to ductile iron pipe, for instance. So now there's been a lot more interest in that market. So again, supply and demand, unfortunately, uh, right now with construction being as high as it is, um, we got to kind of get in line and lock in as early as we can, uh, to provide that certainty in the schedule so that the design builders can continue moving. And, uh, Craig's done a great job on the schedule side, re, reprogramming stuff in different order, just based on when we think we can actually take delivery of some of those, uh, those supplies or those equipment. But, uh, unfortunately, um, we're not the only ones in the market right now.
And what percentage of materials are coming from offshore in your, your experience?
This is very, very little is coming from offshore. All of the, uh, the metal has the American Act in it, so it's very little if, if anything.
So what, what's very little, like 20%, 10%, 40%?
40%.
I'm sorry?
That's a lot.
So what's the, what's the negative outcome that would cause us to go over 175 million?
What, what would cause it to go over 175 million? Million? Continued, continued escalation, you know, continued, uh, material escalation. Uh, I don't, I don't think, uh, if I talk to any of our estimators or any of your estimators, uh, you know, based on what's, what's happened historically, you know, just in the last several months to a year, uh, you know, then they don't, they don't even have the best way of, of defining what it's going to be in one month of the next month. Um, I, I think the, I think the biggest, I think the biggest opportunity for us is, is to manage the schedule and, and relieve some of that acceleration cost and I'll, you know, get more interest from the market, uh, and, and relieve, A, relieve some of that acceleration cost, B, you know, increase that market competition from the subcontractors that Craig's got, Craig's got to hire to build this plant because there, there will be a lot of them.
And have you had other clients use this method to try to offset that?
A lot, a lot of them are doing early, early packages, right? Early procurement packages, equipment and materials.
Are you seeing results, uh, from them doing that? If so, what are they?
Most of them are doing it right now.
And are they experiencing any, any results of a positive or negative nature?
Yeah, I mean, they're getting, they're getting certainty in what they're buying. Um, the only thing is they're having to make a decision in five days, uh, because that's as long as some of the suppliers will lock the prices for. If some might, you're lucky if they lock them for 30, if some will lock it for five. Um, so normally when it was 30, 60, 90 days, they would lock prices. Uh, so there, there's still some, uh, work to be done, even if we decide this is, even if you all decide this is the right path, there's still some work to be done to actually implement this strategy and this change. Um, so I would say, uh, yes, they're getting the certainty in, in locking the current pricing, uh, for, for the materials. Uh, I think they're still having to make pretty quick decisions on what the bids they are, that are, that are coming in.
So it does give you the ability to lock in some pricing.
Mm-hmm.
Over what period of time?
What, what are you getting quoted, Craig?
Yeah, so just to give a more context to the approach, what we're doing is we're, we're taking the ductile iron pipe, which is probably the, the heaviest priced commodity, and we're buying it well ahead of the GMP. So by controlling that aspect of it, you're avoiding a double markup on that material. And then as far as how long the pricing is good for, five days is what they've referenced. We've asked for a 30-day lock on this first order of pipe and we're going to see how that pricing will come in within the next week and a half for conformance to that request. But we're looking to procure all of the ductile iron pipe for the yard and for the underslabs, probably within the next two months. So that largest of the component will, will know where that pricing is. And so you're well ahead of the curve and basically we'll have it structured such that when it arrives, it will be installed at that point.
Mr. Holder?
Can prices be negotiated in the next two weeks on the basis that, okay, this is what we're committed to? If these prices come down, can we negotiate for the lower price?
I'm sure that there may be that possibility, uh, but there's three primary ductile iron suppliers, uh, providing for this job or available to bid on this job. We have one very interested in it. Two of them have not solicit, have put as much interest into it yet. So you really have to wait to see when the bids come in. I'm not sure that we'll be in a position to say we want to negotiate it down. You do have the position that you have a very attractive job to the ductile market. And so, um, we have done the best that we can to solicit and pique their interest in this project. So I think that's going to buy something for you, uh, in the long term. I can't give you an answer, you know, that come 30 days when that price comes in, we can come back and negotiate another 5% off their price on it. Uh, we always try to get an extra 3% to 5% out of the buyout at the final negotiation, but I can't commit to that.
You're looking at more than 5% increase, so we need, we need to be able to pay a lower price as the price comes down. That's the only way this project is going, recover any costs.
Well, yeah, so, so we do try to get the lowest price possible, but I, I can't guarantee you a, a, a reduction in the buyout. You may find yourself, Mr. Holder, at the end of the day, when you bid this ductile iron out, that you have one supplier that's, that has arrived. So it's, it's, it's a very difficult market right now. To Adam's point, when they've mentioned that it's a six-month delivery after shop drawings, it's a long delivery when it used to be just 10 weeks, you know, to get your order.
If you go from seven to 19 specific items, we should see some cost reduction from doing that, should we not?
Are you talking about on the number of packages? Yeah, so the number of packages aren't, isn't just, just ductile. The most of that is equated to all of the equipment for the project. You want to be on control, in control when that equipment's arriving so that it's installed when the facility's built. So a good number of those are equipment packages. Some of it is the ductile iron, uh, some of it is the site, um, prep packages as well. Um, one of the other large packages is the concrete for the entire site. That goes out to bid on September 14th. So, and very quickly, in a matter of five weeks after that, you're going to know the cost of concrete for this project.
All right, anyone else?
Well, I think you're on your game. And I think that, uh, this pandemic has created, you know, more than just health issues. And, uh, I see it even in my profession with supply and demand. And, uh, if you and I go ahead and I, I, I give you a bid of $2.50 for a stem of carnations today, and in three weeks you're going to come back and say, hey, can I get them for a dollar 50? Well, times are tight and so I'm going to have to stick to my $2.50. But I see Mr. Holder's point in that obviously we need to be looking every time we can for a better bargain. It never hurts to ask. But to your point, your team's point, it's pretty hard to do that right now with demands being what it is. You know, cost of getting materials here is one thing, but the other cost I think we're facing everywhere is employment and finding people that maybe we would be lucky enough to have, you know, 10-hour days for 20 months or whatever, you know what I'm saying? But right now, I don't think anybody's even guaranteed they've got plenty of manpower regardless of the bid, you know, all that. There's so many variables that I don't think you can, can connect with. And obviously, until we get this designed, we'd have no idea how much it's going to cost. We know what the elements are that we need to have in the package to create this, but until it's completely done, it's just like a house. How do you know how much it's going to cost until you, the architect finishes drawing it out for you? So I think that, you know, we are in the best position that we can be in and I feel comfortable with this moving head, uh, ahead. But, you know, I am, uh, right here with these council members that, you know, we really have concerns about the, the price tag. And we just want to, one, create public awareness about that, but two, create education and understanding for the public as to why it went from this to this.
Agreed.
Yeah, and you guys are doing a fantastic job helping us to articulate that. So thank you.
And I will say your concerns are our concerns as well. We're not, we're, we're not charging ahead with, with that, completely detached from the numbers. We, we, we understand the numbers, we understand the concern and the impact, so.
Well, the only thing we have on you guys is we have an entire law enforcement.
Yes.
There's that. No. Thank you again. Any other questions before we move on? All right. Wait, Mr. Holder, I'm sorry.
Reluctantly, I make motions to authorize staff to execute this amendment.
Second.
We have a reluctant motion and a second. And I, I feel his pain. Um, to move forward, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, up next is the inter-local agreement with fire protection.
Good evening again, Lee Barbie, Fire Chief. So normally we bring you this, the inter-local agreement, uh, June for approval for July 1. This year is a, a delay. We got it in April or May, but with everything going on with staff changes and schedules, you know, my intent was try to have a meeting prior to, um, with the county and we didn't have that meeting until two weeks ago, uh, requesting, um, some, um, assistance in funding with this agreement. But the county is looking to have this agreement signed and this is for the clay techs, uh, fire district protection that the town has been doing for years. I've attached a memo for you from, uh, the county about what our rescue services are, um, what, what funding we've received for rescue services. We've only received funding for the last couple of years for that. Uh, we've been doing rescue services, uh, for the town since early 2000. Um, those rescue services include, um, trench rescue, hangar rescue and confined space. But we've also, with the mutual aid agreement we have with the county, we've been responding as needed. These are low volume calls, but highly sensitive in safety and require basically the same amount of manpower that we provide on a structural fire. So what's pushed me over the years to talk about it and ask for increased funding or some funding for it, uh, different than what the county's given us, is 30 years we were, we're transitioning from volunteer to that combination of part-time, full-time. We have plenty of manpower that could go on these calls. But in the last few years, the way we've transitioned to full-time to fire department, the daily staffing is what we have. So that affects our response, how we respond. is what we have. So that affects our response, how we respond out in the county. So there's a cost to it, different than what it was years ago. So in your package, there's also a PowerPoint that we put together, we shared with the county, what we think our cost of services are. Now, the last couple of years, we've been talking about combining and using, utilizing manpower with Cleveland and Archillage, and we think that's a good idea because they have the same needs. But still, the town is the one that signs the contract with the county every two years. And so we need, we need to move forward with that. In, in the contract, there's a dependencies for mutual aid, automatic aid, rescue services, and medical services. But Town Clayton Fire Department is the only fire department in the county that's certified that does heavy rescue services, specialty rescue services, confined space, trench, high angle. There is other departments that are doing water rescues, swift water rescue, but we're the only department in the county that does these other services. So that's kind of the delay in the contract of getting, getting it signed. So I'm just asking you to look at it. And if we can get it signed and get it to the county, appreciate that. But I think there's more negotiations that needs to be done for this. Any questions? I'd be glad to ask.
Questions or comments? Chase.
I think it's important to note that we are the only department in the county providing certain specialty rescue services, and there is a cost associated with that service. I commend staff for doing absolutely everything they can do to look after us and the cost associated with that. I think it is what it is at this point. I, I, I think as elected officials, I don't want to be that type of person that says, well, we just don't want to do these things for you anymore. You know, I, I think that's not what we are right now. But I do think there is a bigger conversation to be had, and that needs to be between elected officials. I think staff has done absolutely everything they can do to advocate for us. And I think the next, beyond this level, it needs to be conversation between us and the elected body at the county, of county commissioners, so that we can make sure they're fully aware of the value that they're getting for us and what we bring to the table and, and what those costs are. And I think, I think staff's done phenomenal. But I think that the bigger conversation for the future, you know, we're, we're not going to hold this over anybody's head and say we're not, don't want to sign it. But I think there is a bigger conversation to be had, and that needs to be between elected officials and elected officials to, to raise awareness and let them know that we are very keenly aware of what we're providing and the value that they are getting for our service.
Excellent point. Anyone else? Mr. Holder.
I make motion to authorize staff to execute agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second to authorize staff to execute the agreement. Any further discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signed, motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Up next, staff reports, beginning with the manager.
Mr. Mayor, no major reports. Just hope everybody had a good Labor Day weekend. My Saturday night could have gone a little better, but other than that, it was pretty good. So hope everybody enjoyed theirs.
Are you complaining about the results of the game?
Quite possibly, yes.
Oh.
I did make it to four o'clock today before somebody made a comment to me, so.
Well, I knew it couldn't have been all that sun on your head, so.
No.
There you go. All right.
Good job, Rich. Town attorney?
Town clerk?
No reports, thank you.
Any other staff? All right. Oh, man. What'd you even go sit down for if that's the case?
Well, so you wouldn't call me out.
All right.
Lee Barbie again. I have my deputy manager hat on this time for this. So we, the last few weeks, I've, I've had a lot of good to come out, and I just feel like it's something that, that I was a good night to share it. So starting in the electrical department, the guys run, run calls every week. And so the last two weeks, Merk Woodall was on call. He run, he run a call, run a call on Lombard Street. I actually saw the owner of that residence last week, and he was commending the work that Merk did representing the town. And then as of this morning, there was a request for service to be checked out, and Travis Rose was on call. He made that response. And same thing, the customer wanted to make us aware of that. So these good things are coming out. You know, a lot of times, y'all don't hear them, a lot of times you do, but, but those are two in the electric department. Last week, manager and myself got a, I don't remember who sent us email, the forwarded us the phone message, but it was from Resident Hearing Town. Rod Harrison had done some work on Church Street and was highly commended of that. And then Friday, I stopped by the residence to talk to, to the owner and follow-up conversation, very good regards to Travis Jessup, who is his superintendent. So there again, water resources. People, people have made the comments that they really appreciate what the guys do. I had a voicemail the other night, and I sent it to the battalion chief, 74-year-old man that had a, couldn't get his batteries in the smoke detector. And he was just asking if we could offer help or provide somebody. So I forwarded it to battalion chief, he sent the, he sent it to the station two captain. They went and solved the man's problem. And he was very appreciative of that, and said he was going to make an announcement as rotor meeting. So again, the guys are working hard to, to, and it makes the town look good, and I think y'all need to know that. Next item, 9/11 Remembrance. It's scheduled for Saturday morning at Station 1, 8:30 in the morning, tolling of the bail ceremony that we generally put on. Also, 11 to 3 at Municipal Park, the Seven Hands, with the Boy Scout Troop 24, Cub Scout Troop 24, and Adventure Crew 24 are sponsoring the first responder appreciation lunch. And my last thing, and this is probably, I'll put my fire chief hat back on now. This, this is pretty close. So last year, when we were dealing with our sickness with COVID, our guys were working double shifts. And they were, they were keeping up, keeping shifts going, but I knew they were tired. And at some point, I reached out to the state and asked them for some help. First, we did it through, through our local guys, but when we had the death of Jason Dean, the state stepped in with us, and they helped provide coverage for several days for us to give our guys a break. So just last week, we had three COVID deaths in North Carolina that were related to fire service, two in the western part of state and one in the eastern part. So last week, Matt got a call from Department of Insurance, OSFM, wanted to know if we could help them out. So Friday, September the 10th, we're, we've scheduled an engine company and full personnel, Captain Kyle Driver, engineer Ryan Tillerson, firefighter Austin Bowser, and firefighter Alan Johnson to go do a 24-hour shift for Pender County. And I hope we have y'all's support for that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. All right, no one wishing to speak. I'll turn it over to council for comments.
Mr. Holder.
Rich, I would like for the next meeting or report on what our fund balance is versus our requirement for the minimum and what our surplus is. We need to take a hard look at that and see where we can spend some of it. Sooner or later, somebody's going to pick up on that and say, why can't we have a tax reduction because of the surplus we're carrying? We can't afford a tax reduction.
I'll certainly talk with, I'll certainly talk with Robert Mackay about getting that. I do know the audit is typically, I don't know that it'll be completed by the next meeting, but I'll get the schedule for that with him to get the most accurate number. We've also got a fairly extensive list of, of projects and other items that have come up that we probably want you to consider as part of that.
All right, anyone else?
All right, thank you, everyone. I will entertain a motion to go, go into closed session in 10 minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Motion carries.
All right, is there any other business to come before this council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn second.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Motion carries. Good night.